This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
It's Monday. Good evening. Welcome to the Sampson City Council meeting for Monday, July 17. This meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by eMedia and Shadow Channel 193, a live streaming of their webpage is sampsonmedia.org. Councilor participating in this meeting are gathering in hybrid, or the order is extended until March 2025, which allow us to consult. I remind both the member for the public and the city council to remain mute until recognized by the city council president. Also for the member of the public, please remove your camera for the direction of the meeting unless you are participating in the public speak time. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara.
County Denham, Salem Derby.
Here.
Omar Gomez.
Yeah.
JP Kuzinski.
Yeah.
Dave Munier.
Here.
Tom P.
Here.
Brad Riley.
Here.
Dan Riss.
Here.
Owen Zer.
Here. Mr. President, I move to suspend our rules for the判决 of the bleachers. Second.
I will motion on a second to suspend the rule for the political leaning and for the discussion. Councilor in favor?
Aye. Mr. President, I move for approval of minutes.
This one say yes. Uh. Is it possible? Amanda, can you... Let's have it go, so. So, Amanda, can you hear us?
I can hear you guys.
So, it's not us. Thank you. That's it. That's fine. That's fine. This one, this one. And something we know here. So, here you go. The computer now has. It'll be there. And another purpose. Just one second. Yes, um. Well, that's up to.
You got that, hasn't it?
Yes, I'm just waiting to say before we go.
Minutes? Move that we approve the minutes of the June 21st and July.
Do one.
I'll do one at a time. June 21st meeting. Second.
I have a motion on a second for the approval of the minute of June 21st and for the discussion, Councilor Sarah.
Mr. President, I was not present on the June 21st meeting and minutes were not that I was. And then just like make sure that's a message.
Okay.
One of Barbara's very few mistakes. And for discussion, you know, for those who are in favor?
Aye. Same.
Uh, motion passes. That's fine.
Owen and Dave.
And Dave.
Can you do July 5th because I wasn't there?
Yeah. Uh, Mr. President, I move to approve the July 5th, uh, minutes.
I have a motion on a second to approve the minutes from July 5th and for the discussion, seeing none, for those in favor?
Aye. Same.
That's six to one. Motion passes. Thank you. Police speak time. Is anyone here that want to say anything that is not part of the agenda? No? No. So, we have new business. We have, um, couple of nine. Okay, police speak time. On now. You have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, I figured it out. Hi, um, my name is Kathy Wuzinski. I live on Overlook Drive and and I wanted to express concerns about the farmers who have been flooded out by the recent rain and flooding of the Manhattan and of the Connecticut. And I wanted to ask the city council to consider using CPA funds if that was allowable to assist. The two farms that I'm aware of were Peppin and Mountain View. I don't know whether there are other farms impacted within the city limits. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, moving to the new business. Councilor Riss?
We are allowed by Master General Law Chapter 44, Section 33B, which is a municipal finance chapter of the Master General Laws, to make end of year transfers at the end in the last two months of a fiscal year. We're doing the first 15 days. That's 15 business days. So, today is the last day we can do this. This is to make our budgets whole. So, that's why we can do this tonight and we need to do it in one meeting, or the budgets are in deficit and they're not supposed to be. If you have any questions about that, Hadel's here. Otherwise, I'll simply read the, uh, transfers.
For the week.
Yeah, I mean, just in terms of crescent teas and whatnot, uh, were these things that we were aware of a while ago or did this just come to our attention when we were?
Before you, before you answer, let me, let me make a statement. And I'm gonna make it publicly. I'm really disappointed that we don't have any of the department heads that were supposed to move this money to the department to explain why we're moving this money to them. I just wanna say that publicly. They know, the city knew, that we're gonna have a special meeting today at 5:15. We did a 5:15 with the purpose that the city employees will be in this building and we don't have those, uh, city department heads in this meeting. Then got that we have Hadel, is the city, um, auditor, in this meeting and she can explain it to us. But I wanna say that for the work, not for the vision.
Yeah, uh, just like I was saying, just wanted to get it, just particularly the 256 is just a big enough number that I'm just kind of curious what the timeline was of when you became aware uh, that we were gonna need to do this, uh, you know, obviously if this was something. I, I think the reason why I ask is that in general with a expenditure that big, I would like the opportunity to bring that into committee and bat it around and not have to make a decision in an emergency meeting. And so, I'm just sort of curious what the timeline was of how this came to your attention. I mean, at the end of the day, I'm gonna vote for, what are you gonna do? But I just kind of want to understand situation.
Um, this has to do with the solar credits, which, um, there was a contract which was renewed prior fiscal year 2022 in May, which affected our budget for fiscal year 2023, because we found out a little late in the budget process, uh, for 23. The plan was to go to city council, uh, to ask for more appropriation for these particular departments of going to be negative. Uh, but we were also getting check credit and by Master General Law, it needs to go to the general fund and it needs to close to free cash before we can use that money. And we were still trying to figure out that if we can somehow use that money, if we can put it into the rolling account and we don't have to use other department money for free cash for 2023. I think we, we started having conversation back in July of last year. But then in April, we were more into like, okay, how are we gonna make it work? Um, we came to the point where we couldn't find any ultimate better solution. So then when fiscal year end came, instead of putting off as a prior fiscal year bill to next fiscal year, where I suggested is if we have money in other departments, then let's transfer that instead of deficit spend the account. Because if we deficit spend and there is a deficit, that needs to be raised on the tax and free cash.
Okay. Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yeah.
Is that okay? So, yeah, I think we discussed this a little bit in finance and I just want to make sure for everyone else's benefit. This is something where because of the way that we've restructured some of this stuff, there's money that we were getting in one form, like in a check and now we're getting in a credit or something like that. And so, end of the day, like it's not that we're losing money, it's that there's money that's gonna come to us later that hasn't arrived yet or vice versa, um.
We used to get it as a credit, so bill would have came less amount.
Right.
Now we are getting it as cash, so bill is higher amount. All that money which we have been collecting, I think it's over $500,000 for just this year, um, that's been closed to free cash. So.
Okay.
It's just the timing that we can't have a deficit until it's certified.
Yeah.
We can't use general fund revenue until it's certified as a free cash. But if we keep the deficit on the account, we are forced by Master General Law to raise it on the tax rate.
Okay. That's, that makes me feel way better because what I was really worried about was that like $250,000 went missing. You know, that like it's, it's, if it's like, hey, there's this money, we have it, it's gonna close to free cash, but in the meantime, if there's just a accounting thing that we gotta fix, I'm 100% fine with that. I just wanted to make sure that, yeah.
Councilor Warren?
Um, so I can ask Hadel a question again. Thank you. Um, so in terms of the timeline of how this information was submitted, could this have been done even several weeks prior to today? Meaning that when this information was put forward to your office to do? Like in terms of the timeline, like why, why are we doing this on the very last day versus, you know, several weeks ago or maybe several months ago?
So, as I said, um, we were looking into using the existing money, the cash would be coming into the system and see if taking money from the free cash to support the budget. Um, we were successful to, to use that money. And like me and mayor, what we did is we talked with them in the community, we also talked with internal auditors. So, it took a little bit more time than expected.
Okay.
Um, that's why it was a little.
So, I guess I, the reason why I say that is I just want to make sure that, because I feel last year we had people from our department submitting things at the very last minute and they didn't need to, they could have done it earlier. Is that, are we talking about a situation like that this time? Okay, perfect. All right. I just want to make sure because I know how incredibly difficult, um, your job is and any, any opportunity to, to ensure that we're, we're making sure that our auditors and treasurers and people that work for the city aren't having to crunch things at the last minute is, that's what my goal is. So, I'm, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Councilor Riss?
Just to clarify, and my understanding, first of all, historically, we've used this before. We've done this before. The main reason we need to do this is the tax refund. Because if we do not cover our deficits, it affects the taxpayers directly on this year's taxes. Because we have a deficit. That's just the way the DOR and Master General Law works. So, the reason this is important to do and to avoid deficits is primarily that. And $256,000 is a hit to the taxpayers in how it's all calculated. I'm gonna ask you to figure that out. I'll let Hadel do that. Secondly, these are transfers and for the public's information, this is not a new appropriation. Transfers come from budgeted money that was voted on last June and approved in their budgets. And then the department heads and the, and the auditor moved the money to cover deficits at the end of the year. So, it's not new funds that we're re-appropriating from free cash or from stabilization accounts. It's all money we've already said yes to. It's just being moved from police, fire, dispatch, et cetera, into other accounts.
Councilor Kuzinski?
Uh, just a couple of quick questions. You've done a good job of explaining it. I think everybody can shot some picture here. Uh, when you are, when the departments and yourself and mayor are switching the funds from one account to another, is this all interdepartmental transfers? No interdepartmental transfers?
So, at the end of the fiscal year, um, our charter states that if it's within the department, we always budget portions for personnel services and expenditures. Within the department, sometimes it's a rounding difference in the payroll. Sometimes they have a salary that's not covered, but they have the money in the salary line which mayor can transfer. So, there was very small amount of, uh, money which needed to be transferred to cover that small department. This department was in particular was a huge amount and because they couldn't support their own department, that's why I had to take money from one other department and put it into this separate department. And because after July 1st, I can't remember if it actually did.
So, it sounds like you've explained why it happened this year. Are there any steps that we need to take or you're gonna make to make sure it doesn't happen next year? And are you convinced that this will not happen?
Um, it's gonna happen. If it's gonna happen in fiscal year 24, I already talked with mayor and the department head that I'm seeing a free cash is certified for 5/24 fiscal year. The first thing needs to go to city council is appropriation for, um, solar credits, free credit to take care.
So, that would happen much earlier than?
Yes.
Like November, maybe December or something like that?
As soon as free cash is certified. That's the first thing happening this year.
And the other councilor?
As a little list. So, I'm gonna make the first interdepartmental transfer for the reserve fund transfer, which is only, which is 13,000. I move that the full city council approve an interdepartmental transfer for fiscal year 2023. The amount requested is $13,885 to be transferred from the reserve fund, $13,885 to be transferred to mayor clerical account, $1,250, the legal account, $9,090, the building inspector clerical account, $2,000, and the building inspector alternate account, $1,545 for the purpose of covering the end of year 2023 budget accounts deficits. Second.
Motion on a second for the request of the local association to the end of fiscal year, into the fundamental comfort for $13,885 to cover the end of fiscal year 23 budget account deficit. Any further discussion? Councilor in favor?
Aye.
And against, extension, motion passes. Councilor Riss?
So, you're all aware, Master General Law requires a two-step stroke, which we adjusted. I move this full council approve an interdepartmental transfer from fiscal year 2023. The amount requested is $256,340 to be transferred to, from, to be transferred from police salary, $65,000, police overtime, $10,000, police crossing guard, $22,000, dispatch salary, $22,240, DPW fuel account, $40,000, highway salary, $29,000, highway overtime, $7,000, dispatch salary, $22,000, fire salary, $8,700, fire salary, $5,600, veterans benefits, $1,560, veterans benefits, $22,240. These funds to be, to be transferred to building operations heat and power account, $65,000, building operations heat and power account, again, $10,000, building operations heat and power account, $22,000, building operations heat and power account, $22,240, building operations heat and power account, $40,000, building operations heat and power, $29,000, building operations heat and power, $7,000, building operations maintenance, $23,000, building operations maintenance, $8,700, building operations house supplies, $5,600, building operations repairs, $1,560, and street light energy account, $22,240 for the following purpose, to cover the end of year 2023 budget deficit for building operations and the street light account. Second.
I have a motion on a second for the transfer of $256,000, $240 to cover the end of this year 23 budget deficit, building operation and street lights. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those in favor?
Aye.
And against, extension, motion passes. So, we'll conclude with the financial comfort. Um, we have a request from the Our Lady of the Valley for the expansion of the, of the St. Bridget Cemetery.
Yes.
And how, I have all the documents from the package that the churches provide. We have Mr. Brown here. I can explain all of this, but I think he's probably the best person to do it because he was in the middle of all these transactions. Um, so, uh, before I will allow Mr. Brown to talk, I just wanna take, uh, any comment from, uh, from the Kuzinski.
I just wanted to say that I wanted everybody to know that as a, someone who attends mass at the church, I just wanted to be sure everyone knew that that's something that we do and I don't see that as a conflict of interest, uh, or adherence conflict of interest. However, I did want to be sure we disclosed, I filed the, it was Barbara, the papers for that, uh, to the Matthew book that we have.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other risks?
I have to say the same thing then. I don't feel, I never felt there was a conflict of interest, but I'm a member of the parish. For the record.
Thank you, Councilor Riss. Any other counselors or any councilor have any questions about the different things over there, their puddle of the church? No? Mr. Brown?
So, thank you very much for getting this on your agenda. Uh, just to give you a little bit of background, St. Bridget Cemetery on Everett Street is, um, more than 100 years old. I'm not sure we can tell exactly when it was established, but if you walk into some of the older sections of the cemetery, some of the dates of death on the stone start with an 18 number. So, it's pretty old cemetery. It's currently about 75% of capacity of sold graves. Um, even though it may not look full, you don't see headstones. Obviously, some of those plots could be sold. So, when we were presented with an opportunity to purchase the property immediately adjacent to the cemetery, um, we seized that opportunity, which would probably take care of us for the next 100 years with burials. Um, as you might imagine, there's no living person in the city of East Hampton who's ever permitted a cemetery, because they're all that old. But, um, it's a lengthy process and, and it's complicated by the fact that, um, this property is surrounded by water as the existing cemetery is. So, uh, the approval process started about 18 months ago. We started with the local conservation commission. Um, plans were drawn up, setbacks established, all of that. And ultimately, the conservation commission unanimously approved the plans for the expansion of the cemetery. Then it needed to go to DEP, uh, and DEP put us, I was gonna say put us through that wringer, but it wasn't really a wringer. But I'm, obviously, all these processes take time. Um, ultimately, we received DEP approval for the plans that have been approved by conservation. It then, um, needed to go to the Board of Health for approval. Board of Health, their responsibility is to just make sure that you're burying according to proper procedures, that you're not just sticking an embalmed body in the ground, which obviously could contaminate. But obviously, being a cemetery that's been run this long by the church, uh, we kind of think we know what we're doing when it comes to proper burials. Um, we were delayed a bit in the Board of Health process. I'm not throwing any stones at anyone, but as you know, relapse and it was a bit of a hiccup there in the time it took to, um, get before the Board of Health and get a vote. And, uh, so that slowed us down a little bit. And then ultimately, um, it was determined by the city attorney that, um, there's a Master General Law out there at the lead that says it's free, also requires the approval of the governing body, meaning the city council and the mayor, need to sign off on this. Um, we were hoping to go out to bid this past winter so that we would be ready maybe to get favorable bids and uh, begin to get the work done. We're hoping now to get it done in this construction season. The work primarily consists of a road. So, if you had an opportunity to be in St. Bridget Cemetery, the far end, furthest away from the center of town, there's a road straight in with a cul-de-sac at the end. There's a lot of other roads in the cemetery, but we're looking, this design calls for that really mirror image, that the road will come in, an existing curb cut from Everett Street, go all the way back and have a cul-de-sac at the end, which then allows, um, ease of burials on both sides of that road. Um, the plan's called for some stormwater basins, some plantings, some tree removal. Um, and ultimately, construction of a small chapel on the site that would be used for occasional services that would be right on site. Um, electricity and water, uh, electricity to the chapel, water for the convenience of those who water flowers in the cemetery. It could be several years before we actually see any burials on this because of the 25% capacity still in the existing cemetery. But we do have a three-year window with the conservation commission to complete the work that's been approved. We're already closing in on more than 18 months since that approval, so, um, and, and I know the council's in, not throwing stones at anyone, but I know the council's limited meetings in the summer. So, I had, I respectfully requested to get on this agenda and with any luck, get approval tonight.
Councilor Riss?
Just for the record, um, one of the things I asked Mr. Brown was about a butters. And obviously, in the packet, you could see plans are done. There's a map and it does, it's close to Everett Street. The health department and the Concom approached the butters. There were no complaints. So, the people know about it and there's no problem, which is why, which was my only concern. And our responsibility is to all the people. So, I certainly have no objection to this because I don't even know why when those three agencies are doing the bulk of the work, we have, we are, obviously, we're the ultimate legislator body, so we have to say yes to it. But the bulk of the work and approval process, looking at everything else, has been done. So, I certainly feel it's appropriate to vote on this this evening because of the Concom deadline especially.
Did you want to add the one of the butters response, right?
Yeah, uh, one, one of the butters, the second time around. So, like, these, these notices to butters went out with quite a bit of distance between them because Concom was the first and then the Board of Health was the last to go and receive some. It was probably a year. And, and one, uh, woman responded with a question, "Does this mean I'm gonna lose my house?" And the answer was, "No, we're not. We're going on the open land. It's already there." Um, in conversations I had with, with, with folks, uh, with all due respect to the folks that are under the ground, a cemetery is the next best thing to open space.
Yep, that's true.
I used to live on Everett Street and we always had these excellent neighbors.
Yeah.
Quiet neighbors. Never caused any trouble.
Yeah, right. Any other counselor? Counselor Sarah?
Yeah, you certainly won't get annoyed because, um, was this the parcel? Was this the parcel that we evaluated a few years ago for affordable housing?
Yes, the same one.
Okay. And there's, there's no further interest in housing development on that?
Pretty sure the church bought it.
It's privately owned. Oh, well, yeah. And I did look into that and, um, if you recall the time, because of the setbacks, then, um, there wasn't enough room to put enough units in to make it viable.
Yes, true. Yeah. Any other concerns? That answer, any question? Sarah?
Oh, no. I just wanted to clarify that.
Any other councilor have any questions or comments before we take the vote? Councilor Derby?
So, it just came into my head. I, and I don't have the map in front of me. Is it? There is a little peninsula of land that there used to be a bridge on. Is that located on this property? Do we know that? The, the, it used to go over to New City.
Correct. It comes to this property.
It does come to this property.
But it's not, it's just, it just comes into a bank. But it's not a peninsula that goes out.
Okay.
It comes into a bank.
Into a bank. But that is, on this property is where that bridge.
Correct.
Um. I'm just wondering if in the future, if someone wanted to, it's already been discussed about the possibility of a foot bridge being established there.
Okay.
And, um, all I said to the planning department is when the time comes, you'll have to deal with the artists' vision of Springfield to get approval to have that bridge land on private property.
Any other counselors? Councilor Kuzinski?
Since this subject has been brought up, are there alternative locations to consider?
Kuzinski, it's just, I probably not.
I think that's, that's where it was.
It, it may not be, but that's where, if you go there, you could see the piers already sticking out of the water. And I think that maybe wanted to use some existing infrastructure. Um, personally, I don't, I don't think it'll be a problem. I think the biggest problem the church has been having when the time comes is the litter and liability. Will be the issue. So, if the city can remove liability from anybody who gets hurt walking through a cemetery, then they'll probably be okay. But I don't know if you can ever remove liability from everybody, so.
It is in my mind. That's where the East Hampton Bridge of Flowers was supposed to be. So, which would be appropriate going to a cemetery, so.
Anyone else? Seeing none?
Okay. Uh, I move that in accordance with MGL 114, Section 34, the city council approves the request made by Our Lady of the Valley Parish to expand, expand St. Bridget Cemetery into properly located at 109 Everett Street in accordance with plans and departmental approvals submitted for the July 17th, 2023 city council.
Second. I have a motion on a second for the request of from Our Lady of the Valley Church, expansion of St. Bridget Cemetery. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
And against, extension, motion passes. I take a motion, George?
Someone, second.
I have a motion on a second to adjourn. I have a motion and a second for June, if those who are in favor.
Aye.
Against, extension, motion passes, see you later.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.